Well, good morning. Thank you all for being here today. So, at the beginning of council meetings, traditionally, we present resolutions and most of the time, Council President Johnson is the one encouraging people to come down in order for her to present a resolution to an important partner or community group. And as you know, this morning, we'll be presenting resolutions and gifts to five elected officials whose last council meeting is today. Then, we're going to start with Council President Johnson, and we will be followed by all of the other council members who are having their last council meeting today, and I believe the mayors will be joining us as well. So, I have been asked to say a few words about Barb, and I said, "I would do it if I couldn't cry." And I'm going to, so I guess I'll read the resolution.
Okay.
That will be easier.
That's fine.
And then, maybe I'll have the composure to say a few words, and by January, I'll have the composure to say a few words, I'm quite sure. So, and I have my bifocals on just to be able to do this. So, this is a resolution honoring Council President Barbara Johnson for her years of service to the city of Minneapolis. Whereas Barb Johnson was first elected to the Minneapolis City Council in 1997 as the representative ward four, succeeding her mother, Alice Rainville, who held the same seat from 1975 to 1997. And whereas Barb is a lifelong resident of North Minneapolis, where she has lived with her husband, Duane, and raised their three daughters, Sarah, Emily, and Margaret; and whereas Barb was first elected by her peers to be the city council president in 2006, a position she has held for 12 years, becoming the longest-serving city council president in the history of the city of Minneapolis. Whereas prior to serving as a city council member, Barb worked as a registered nurse, a job which gave her the skills to triage, to soothe, and care for patients and constituents. And during her tenure as a Minneapolis city council member, Barb served on every one of the standing committees. Whereas Barb's strong commitment to parks, open space, and dedicated public land is the result of her 18 years of service on the Metropolitan Parks and Open Space Commission, as well as her service on the Mississippi National River and Recreation Area Commission, as well as her collaboration with the state of Minnesota, the Minneapolis Park and Rec Board, and the Three Rivers Park District, and the creation of the North Mississippi Regional Park. Whereas Barb's service to the community has also included membership on numerous other boards and commissions, including the St. Anthony Falls Heritage Board, the Board of Estimate and Taxation, Meet Minneapolis, the Municipal Building Commission, the Twin Cities Community Land Bank, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee, the City Labor Management Committee, the Hennepin County Task Force on Teen Pregnancy, the Botno Corridor Management Committee, the Mississippi Riverfront Partnership, and as an appointee of Governor Mark Dayton to the Minnesota Public Employees Retirement Association Board of Trustees. Whereas Barb was a founding member of the Victory Neighborhood Association and served as the chair of its board from 1994 to 1997. Whereas Barb Johnson is committed to reviving quality housing in North Minneapolis, the community that has faced considerable challenges in the aftermath of the 2011 tornado and the foreclosure crisis. Whereas Barb worked extensively with Hennepin County to merge the city and county library systems, efforts which have led to the reopening of libraries that had previously been closed due to budget constraints. Whereas Council President Johnson has been integral in creating and maintaining our sister-city partnerships on behalf of the city of Minneapolis across the world. Whereas Council President Johnson's leadership was integral to the passage of landmark legislation creating the 20-year Neighborhood Park and Infrastructure Plan passed in 2016. And whereas Barb Johnson has been a steadfast leader, known for building relationships across the city, county, state, and region to get work done. Whereas Barb has been a tireless advocate for North Minneapolis, working to secure businesses, amenities, and resources to contribute to the community, which have included North America's first natural filtration pool at Weber Park, the new Weber Park Library, North Market, the new North Minneapolis supermarket, that's the result of a joint venture between Pillsbury United Communities and North Memorial Health. And whereas throughout her tenure with the city, President Johnson has mentored, partnered with, and been a colleague to, three mayors, 36 members of the city council, and numerous department heads and staff at all levels of the city enterprise. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council hereby present this honorary resolution in recognition of its sincere gratitude and appreciation for the many contributions made by Council President Barb Johnson to the North Side and to the city. Together, we wish her the best in her future endeavors.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE). I'm sorry. I'm going to keep this quiet. All right. I'll hold it for you. All right. All right. (APPLAUSE). Council President, different than the other gifts we'll be presenting today. We're presenting you with the Father of Waters statue for being the longest-serving council president in our city's history. President Johnson, you've taught me a lot about what it's like to be a leader in our city these first four years. I've admired how you conduct business with every employee of our city, and how you treat staff in our city, and how you hold so many relationships of our city together. You are going to be greatly missed, and thank you for teaching me what it's like to represent a whole city and also represent your ward in the North Side.
Thank you so much.
Now, I'll turn it over to Chuck Lutz for a couple more comments.
Thank you. Thank you. That is heavy.
Oh, yes, it's heavy.
I'm Chuck Lutz. I'm deputy director of CPED, and I have known Barb forever. And when --[407.21][407.21](LAUGHTER). In fact, when I first met Barb in 1985, when she and I were serving on the task force to establish a new North Mississippi Regional Park. I reminded her about that the other day, and she said, "Has it been that long?" And I said, "Yeah, it's been that long." And a little did I know that 12 years later, in 1997, I'd be volunteering in Barb's first campaign for city council when her mother, Alice Rainville, decided to retire. What I've always appreciated about Barb is several things, but what I appreciate most is that the votes she takes and the votes she casts are not rooted in politics. Really, they are rooted in two questions: What's the right thing to do for the fourth ward, and what's the right thing to do for the city of Minneapolis? And I appreciate that. And Barb's accomplishments are many. I know that Lisa mentioned a lot of them already, but I just want to reiterate again because they're important. The new Weber Park Library, the new Weber Park Pool, the North Mississippi Regional Park, and, again, the new North Market grocery store. But Barb also has been a leader in her ward in terms of just being vigilant, paying attention to the small things. How many staff people here have gotten calls early in the morning from Barb Johnson?[480.12][480.12](LAUGHTER). And we recall those calls fondly.[483.77][483.77](LAUGHTER). Barb will call me and say, "What's going on with that vacant house on Fremont, or what's going on with that vacant lot in Penn? Just tell me. Get me some answers." And we always do. And that's very, very important, because that vigilance to her ward is one of the hallmarks of her success as a council member, I believe. But Barb's also been a city builder, and that's also very important. And again, the test for her in terms of the project citywide that she supports is, what's the right thing to do for the city? And Barb's been unafraid to take on tough projects, even in the face of great controversy. And we know some of those projects that were greatly controversial in the city. But just a few to mention, the new Central Library, the Niccollet Mall, the Midtown Exchange, the Global Market, DL Sal Athletic Field, and, of course, Downtown East. All those projects are important to the city, and they could not have happened, Barb, without your vocal and vigorous support. So, thank you for being a friend, a mentor, and ally for me all these years.
Thank you, Chuck. Well, what can I say?[554.29][554.29](APPLAUSE). My turn? Well, I'm delighted to receive, I have to say, delighted to receive all these accolades. You know, I think it has obviously been a huge honor to represent the people of the fourth ward. They're great, great people who experience a lot of challenges that other people don't in this city. And so, it's always been a real delicate balancing act of trying to make sure that, you know, you pay attention to the needs of the ward, make sure that resources are allocated in a fair way across the city, but then be supportive of Minneapolis as an enterprise. And that has been my goal, to make sure that people recognize how important this city is in the economy of our region. And it is, you know, we drive the train. We drive the train. And as Chuck said, sometimes you have to take on projects that are somewhat controversial and push forward with them. And I think I'm going to say it, you know, the Twins Ballpark. I went over and testified at the legislature for the Twins Ballpark. Well, we receive 3% of everything that goes on in that facility, and it has, in my opinion, stimulated a wonderful development of a neighborhood that was absolutely underutilized in a gray corner of our city at the edge of North Minneapolis. And that development is spreading into North Minneapolis now. We're just delighted about that. But it takes a real vision. I had no idea, I knew that development would come around US Bank Stadium, but I had no idea how quickly it would happen, $1 billion with the new property tax value around that stadium, a new ambulatory care center in a hospital that I worked in at one time, Hennepin County Medical Center. And those are the important things, the important investments in a community. And I feel like I leave at a really good time. I'm proud of the things that have just kind of serendipitously, because projects take a long time, happened in the last couple of years, including the new pool, the new library. And then, just this week, we cut the ribbon on the North Market, which has just been a wonderful thing to have happen in the fourth ward. And I look at Target Center for citywide investments, Target Center, the development around US Bank Stadium, the fact that we invested in our Niccollet Mall, our city's Main Street. And so, I just am really pleased that all those projects are, you know, in use at this time. And so, I feel like I'm leaving at a good time. And I just want to say thank you to all of my colleagues that I, you know, have served with. Thank you, three mayors I've served with. Thank you, Mayor, for being here. And I cannot say enough about our city staff. I have to tell you, we have the best staff in the world, and they are so professional. And when we look at our employee survey, people are so proud of the work that they do for the city of Minneapolis, and they should be, because you're the face of Minneapolis, you're who interact with the people at the block-by-block level. And we are so blessed to have the great staff that we have in this city. And I have enjoyed working with every one of you. As Chuck said, I'm sure people got phone calls. My housing inspectors used to say, "Oh, she's out driving around again." You can tell, you know? But anyway, so, but people are so responsive and so helpful. And, you know, I just know that that, I couldn't have done what I did without great, great staff. And then, I want to thank my family. I have my two sisters, two of my four sisters sitting here to join us. And I have three lovely daughters. I'm so lucky, a great husband. And I think that people don't understand in public service how challenging it is, not so much for the candidate, but for your family, or for the elected official, but it's for your family. They take the things that people say way more personally than you do. You've got a harder shell. And it's really hard on your family, and it's hard on your family for the evenings that you spend away from them, for the time that you're on the telephone dealing with issues. And it's just, it is a real balancing act, and I couldn't have done it without a great family, a great family. So, we benefited from my mother's leadership and, you know, being council president for the longest-serving time, I knocked off my mother, and I hope she's okay with that.[836.82][836.82](LAUGHTER). But anyway, anyway, it's just been, it's been a pleasure to serve this city, to serve the residents of the fourth ward. And I'm really proud of my crew, and I thank everyone for being here today and for all of the wonderful things that people have said too on social media and letters. I've gotten so many cards. Thank you all. Thank you all.[856.01][856.01](APPLAUSE).
Yes, this is Act Two, Settle In.[858.01][858.01](LAUGHTER). We have a few more acts to go, as you can imagine. And I am so honored and delighted that I get to help honor Elizabeth Glidden.[861.01][861.01](LAUGHTER). And I'm joined up here also by Doris Christensen and Councilmember Kano, and our wonderful clerk, Casey Carl. And you're going to hold that for me as well? All right. I'm delighted that I get to read the resolution for Elizabeth. Elizabeth and I came into office at the same time, and so, we're kind of council member siblings. It's been amazing to kind of learn the ropes along with Elizabeth, to collaborate, to be a partner. I think we partnered on many things and many initiatives that we've pushed forward. I think we've often had our differences along the way, but Elizabeth's always been a confidante for me, somebody that we could talk through things, open, transparent, and really clear that what she wanted to do was make things better for the people of the city of Minneapolis. And I'm going to miss her terribly. I'm still not sure how I'm going to go on without her in January, but I'll do the best that I can. And at least you're not leaving the city, and you're going to stay engaged, I'm sure, in what we're doing and keeping an eye on everything. And this is from the mayor and the city council, honoring Council Vice President Elizabeth Glidden for her years of service to the city of Minneapolis. Elizabeth Glidden was elected in November 2005 to represent the eighth ward and was reelected in 2009 and in 2013, serving the city of Minneapolis and its people for 12 years as council member and four of those as council vice president. And whereas Council Vice President Glidden has served in numerous leadership positions for the council, including as Chair of the Committee of the Whole and Chair of Intergovernmental Relations, Regulatory Services, and Elections and Rules Committees; and whereas Council Vice President Glidden has led the Minneapolis City Council as a champion for racial and social justice and progressive change, establishing a more fair and representative democracy for the city through authoring and implementing ranked-choice voting legislation prohibiting discrimination against Section 8 voucher holders, establishing the Transgender Issues Work Group, and creating at the request of the community the Transgender Equity Council, showing unwavering commitment to the protection of immigrants and immigrant communities through creation of a Minneapolis Legal Defense Fund and U-Visa Ordinance, creating regular process to protect victims of crime, and authoring groundbreaking legislation establishing the Division of Race and Equity. And whereas Council Vice President Glidden has stood firm in support of workers' rights, labor rights, and opportunities to build wealth, including authoring Minneapolis's Ban the Box policy, helping establish labor peace legislation, authoring the Hiring Pay Plan, Hiring Equity Plan for the Vikings Stadium, increasing prevailing wage protections, eliminating the Rule of Three, directing goals for supplier diversity and workforce inclusion, and as author of groundbreaking legislation establishing requirements for sick and safe time, and chief author of a city ordinance raising the minimum wage to $15 an hour. And whereas Council Vice President Glidden has advocated for and helped secure the city's interests time and again, including leading as the city council's Inner Government Relations Chair, merger of Minneapolis pensions into state pension system, fighting attempts by the state to infringe on local control of cities, building multi-jurisdictional support for the Orange Line, Bus Rapid Transit from downtown Minneapolis to Lakeville, and helping transform the 35W Lake Transit Access Project from a ramps-only project to a transit-focused project that will serve diverse neighborhoods with premier transit service. And whereas Council Vice President Glidden has prioritized and uplifted the important narrative of local African-American history, including with historic designation of the Minnesota Spokesman Recorder Building, the Arthur and Edith Lee House, the Tillsom Bilt Homes Historic District, and working in collaboration with the Black community to reverse the erasure of African-American history. And whereas Council Vice President Glidden has been a remarkable advocate for community-based planning and development, prioritizing equitable development reflective of the multicultural community at the East 38th Street Corridor, and investing in the success of the 38th Street and Chicago Avenue intersection in collaboration with small business and arts communities. And whereas Council Vice President Glidden has demonstrated a longstanding commitment to the environment, steering development of Minneapolis's Climate Action Plan, creating the city's energy benchmarking requirement for commercial buildings, and establishing the trailblazing Clean Energy Partnership, a first-in-the-nation collaboration between the city of Minneapolis Excel Energy and CenterPoint Energy to help the city reach its Climate Action Plan and Energy Vision goals for 2040. And whereas Council Vice President Glidden, an accomplished classical violinist and member of the Civic Orifice of Minneapolis, has been a champion of the arts, including creating the One Minneapolis, One Read Program, helping establish the Chicago Avenue Fire Arts Center at the intersection of 38th and Chicago, participating in the Arts and Chicago Collaborative, authoring the city's permanent commitment to annual dedicated public art funding of 1.5% of city-issued net debt bonds, as well as her support for local individual artists and community festivals. And whereas Council Vice President Glidden is a respected national coalition builder, advocate for cities, and organizational leader, proudly serving on the Boards of Directors for Local Progress, the League of Minnesota Cities, and Metro Cities; and whereas Council Vice President Glidden has led by example in her commitment to creating a more diverse workforce. Whereas Council Vice President Glidden is a loving mother to Emily, age five, and Cecilia, age nine, and dedicated partner to husband Eric, a beloved member of the eighth ward community, and inspirational leader to her staff and so many other city staff and colleagues, and a person held in high esteem by all who know her. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Minneapolis, the city council, does hereby present this honorary resolution in recognition of its sincere gratitude and appreciation for the endless contributions and the fierce commitment by Elizabeth Glidden to making the city of Minneapolis a better place to live for all.[1216.01][1216.01](APPLAUSE). Alondra has something to contribute.
Yep, thank you. So, here we have something to have you take home and remember, all of the amazing work that you've done with us, for us, for the city, for our employees and our residents. And I first got a chance to meet Elizabeth when I was a staffer for Council Vice President Robert Lilligrin. And I remember being just so inspired by the fact that you were a mom, and you were doing this work, and you were doing this work powerfully. And so, I would say that one of the reasons that I decided to run for office, and I think one of the reasons many women actually step up in leadership, is because of you, Elizabeth. And, you know, I think I can speak on behalf of our full council here that we are so thankful for your professional, dedicated, consistent, powerful voice at the different tables that the city of Minneapolis sat in externally, internally, and just by, you know, the resolution itself, the amazing work that you led to help shape our city government in a better direction, to ensure that all of us were included in that vision. And I know that we're going to miss you greatly. We hope you won't go away. We hope that you can only be a phone call away from us as we're looking at leading the city with our new council members that are coming in, and really looking forward to continuing the strong legacy that you have left for many of us here and our residents. So, muchas gracias.[1298.33][1298.33](APPLAUSE).
Doris Christopher, to say a few words.
Yes. I'd like to say that kudos to everything you've said, because that describes, and for you too, that describes Elizabeth to a T. I met Elizabeth, oh, when she was canvassing in our neighborhood. And my husband, my husband told her to go away.[1323.83][1323.83](LAUGHTER). And I came to the door, thank God, and told her to come back, because I worked at legal aid. And so, I had heard about Elizabeth, that she was a civil rights attorney, and that she would be very good for the neighborhood. And so, I wanted to meet her. And so, our friendship started from there. And we've been friends ever since. And I must say that she has a skill that a lot of people don't possess, the skill of listening. She listened to all of our concerns in our area, and we had plenty. And she started, she started, really, the One Read, and we all started reading my niece's book, Michelle, and The Grace of Silence. And the One Read, and also, something that she did that I think is unique, she started the building bridges. She took all these, the factions, the different factions in our area, and she pulled them together. So, we all knew each other, and we are, you know, and we got a lot done from that. One of the things was the Legacy Committee at Dr. Martin Luther King Park. And we put in, just last year, we put in a playground, and after the first, I think it might be the first or second African-American playground at Dr. Martin Luther King Park. And there's a lot of good things. I could go on and on. Elizabeth, one thing, she always takes your phone calls. And I've had, you know, I belong, being a senior, I have a lot of connections with the senior community. And they all say the same thing, that she takes our phone calls and addresses our concerns to the best of her ability. And I just want to say, I'm not going to miss her, because I'm going to stay in touch.[1474.01][1474.01](LAUGHTER).[1475.01][1475.01](APPLAUSE).
All right. Well, these things are kind of a cry fest, maybe mostly for me. But thank you for your really kind words. And Ms. Christopher is a tremendous mentor to me, and she didn't say this, but she actually was on a committee to help me hire multiple staff people in my office. And so, she really has been just a huge influence on me and kind of how I do my work. I wanted to thank my husband, Eric, who is here. I love that Council President talked about family. Eric and I were on our honeymoon, and that's where I kind of popped the idea to him, what about if I ran for city council?[1526.11][1526.11](LAUGHTER). And, well, I will say, he was all for it. So, but he has just been an amazing support to me, you know, when times are bad and all this kind of thing. But I've had two children while I've been serving as a council member. My daughter Cecilia, who's nine, my daughter Emily, who's five. And so, I feel like, you know, I've grown up being in city hall, and people just have been so kind to me as a mother and a new mother, a council member. So, I just want to say that's really meaningful and really helped me do my work. It's going to be hard not to walk into this building every day. It's a special place. I get a certain feel from being in here of the importance of the work we do. And one of the things you don't think about so much is how you get to be part of this organization that's called the city with thousands of employees who are here because they love being public servants. And it's just been a deep honor to get to know so many of you, and I only, you know, get to know so many people, but I just have such deep respect for the work that's done here. And you know what I would say to my colleagues returning and my colleagues that are coming on is, you know, remember to be respectful, to say thank you, because it means a lot. I know it does. I want to say thank you to the staff in my office, Deba Sardar, Sarah Lopez. You guys have, we've been a team. You have helped us do so many amazing things. I feel like we've been an active group together, accomplishing a lot, and you have moved the work. You're part of movement work. And I really appreciate you. And I want to say too, I appreciate Jennifer White and Andrea Jenkins, who also were part of my office for many, many years. And you guys are amazing, and I'm just proud of where everybody has gone on with their career.
been so kind to me as a mother and a new mother, a council member. So I just want to say that's really meaningful and really helped me do my work. It's going to be hard not to walk into this building every day. It's a special place. I get a certain feel from being in here of the importance of the work we do. And one of the things you don't think about so much is how you get to be part of this organization that's called the city, with thousands of employees who are here because they love being public servants. And it's just been a deep honor to get to know so many of you, and I only, you know, get to know so many people, but I just have such deep respect for the work that's done here. And you know what I would say to my colleagues returning and my colleagues that are coming on is, you know, remember to be respectful, to say thank you, because it means a lot. I know it does. I want to say thank you to the staff in my office, Deba Sardar, Sarah Lopez. You guys have, we've been a team. You have helped us do so many amazing things. I feel like we've been an active group together, accomplishing a lot, and you have moved the work. You're part of movement work. And I really appreciate you. And I want to say too, I appreciate Jennifer White and Andrea Jenkins, who also were part of my office for many, many years. And you guys are amazing, and I'm just proud of where everybody has gone on with their careers, and it's just amazing to see. I guess my last comment is that more and more I see the work that happens here in the City of Minneapolis as just influential work that's part of a connected network of cities that are kind of digging in and saying, we are the ones that are connected to the residents, and we're going to get work done. You know, when things are stuck in Congress, things are stuck at the state level, I mean, we are part of what they call the municipalist movement, the fearless cities. And it's an international thing. And so I feel, walking out this door, like I just am so proud to have been part of that.
Pretty good. Yeah, probably won't need Kleenex for this one, I don't know.
And that's what all these city employees are part of, that's what all these policymakers
We'll see, we'll see. But I will say, John, you've been a fantastic colleague.
who have debate and figure out amongst ourselves kind of a direction to take.
Before I get into the resolution, I just want to go right to you as the guy that I got to know all this time on City Council.
And I guess maybe my last thing is just, I respect to all of you.
We came in together, and we didn't come in with the sort of fanfare of, wow, there's
You know, you figure out how you need to be a professional up here, how you need to
like eight new council members, and they're pretty wild, we don't know what they're about. It's like, three sort of modest folks had done some public service, and we kind of slipped
do your work and respect each other, and we're not always going to agree, and that's
in, and we were definitely the minority with a very experienced council, and they let
the point of city government in my mind. So, thank you all.
us know it. Didn't have the numbers, didn't have the experience. But John, I actually knew you well before, by reputation, before we were colleagues. I mean, you were an absolute rock star on the education reform and education advancement and dedication to public schools. You know, I was pushing, doing my little activism on the Northeast side, but this guy was really a leader. And I would ask, who's that guy? He's at every committee, he's on everything, he's on every fundraiser. Well, that's John Quincy. And so that's how I first got to know you. Later I got to know you when we came on council. What a powerful advocate you are for housing, how knowledgeable you are on that subject matter. And my favorite part of service to date has been working with you and others, Council Member Goodman on the CD Committee, trying to fashion sound policy moving forward to great challenges. And you've been an architect of a lot of that. You're fantastic. As a matter of fact, we went to the first fundraiser when we first got elected, it was for homeless housing. And so we go in the room, it's in a gym, it's a great thing, great cause, and John goes roaring, and you think he's Frank Sinatra. Everyone knows him. He's high-fiving him, giving him the wave, giving him the hug. And so his leadership was known in the Housing Committee well before he was an elected official, and I'm sure you're going to be a leader moving forward on all of those fronts. And also, many people didn't know this, and I certainly wouldn't have guessed it when we took office, he's a funny guy. I mean, he's got a great sense of humor and a great taste in scotch, which is always great for after work. That's been a great joy too. After work, absolutely. And so with this, let's get to the serious business of what John's accomplished, and this will not even capture half of it. So, honoring Councilmember John Quincy for his years of service at City Minneapolis, John Quincy was first elected to the City Council in 2009 and served with full faith, commitment, and distinction for eight years, during which time he has served as a member of the Council Standing Committee Ways and Means, Intergovernmental Relations, Transportation Public Works, Public Safety Audit Elections Rules Claims Board of Estiment Taxation, and his leadership position at the Chairs of Ways and Means and Rules Committee, of which he did a fantastic job. Whereas his often humble demeanor and subtle sense of humor worked well for him, forging consensus between council members, staff, Ward 11 neighbors, organizations conducting regular neighborhood summits, where groups could share ideas and work together on neighborhood issues as well. During his tenure as Chair of Ways and Means, John Quincy worked tirelessly to forge a partnership between the city and the park board to ensure a long-term funding for neighborhood parks and streets. The historic document was unanimously approved by the City of Minneapolis and the Council in 2016. John Quincy honorably represented the City of Minneapolis and City Council on the 35W Solutions Alliance Committee, the Noise Oversight Committee, Meet Minneapolis Board Executive Committee, the Government Finance Officers Association, Family Housing Fund, Heading Home Hennepin, Northern Lights Express, the Joint City-City Lead-led Task Force, the Youth Coordinating Board, and currently serves on the first Vice President of the National Association to ensure a sound, controlled environment, which serves as America's only nationwide community-based association committed to reducing the impact of aviation noise on local communities. And John Quincy was elected by his peers to serve as the DFL Majority Leader. Whereas John Quincy served the Ward 11 Representatives Noise Oversight Committee during his tenure saw the successful reversal of the proposed RNAV tracts and would have detrimentally impacted the residents of South Minneapolis, as well as the negotiated expansion of the Max Noise Mitigation Program. Both of these actions will improve the lives of residents of Minneapolis for generations. Whereas through John Quincy's efforts, the first organic recycling program in the 11th Ward was initiated in Hale, Page, Diamond Lake neighborhoods, which grew to include the citywide organic recycling program. And whereas John Quincy has been an advocate for ongoing efforts to reform government, to provide better service for citizens, including support for single-source recycling, $15 wage, minimum wage, and sick and save time legislation. And whereas during his tenure, the Chairs of Ways and Means, John Quincy's leadership through four structurally balanced city budgets, helped the city to responsibly commit to important needs of the city, including fully funding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and senior initiatives. And whereas John Quincy co-authored the resolution established in the City of Minneapolis Youth Cabinet and subsequently served as his chair. And whereas John Quincy led the charge for financial literacy transparency through the creation of the Responsible Banking Ordinance and the Children's Savings Accounts. And whereas John Quincy's tenure, over 50 miles of streets have been resurfaced and 12 miles of bike lanes have been added to the 11th Ward alone. And whereas John Quincy's contagious sense of humor, fun, made the yearly Pride and Aqua Tenor parades special with custom t-shirts and, quote, "Just one more banner and strings of lights." Now, therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and the City Council do hereby present this honorary resolution in recognition of the sincere gratitude and appreciation of the many, many contributions made by Councilmember John Quincy to the City of Minneapolis. Together, their best wishes in his future endeavors. Thank you, John.
So, John, I know there's nothing you want more than this item. I'm glad that I got to be the one to give you this, because I know you were good friends with my predecessor, and I'm not sure what you quite thought of the 10th Ward council member who was biking in from uptown. And I like to think that I won you over, and someday I'm sure you'll grow on me too. But as Kevin said, you know, you brought so much seriousness and focus to your work, and we all saw that. You don't make a lot of speeches and grandstand, and you're not the one with the microphone at the press conferences, but you're the one who comes into work every day and does the work of making sure the budget is solid, making sure that you're working with all of us, making sure that the things you care about the most and that were priorities for your ward got done each and every day. And we all saw that, and it means a lot to all of us. And you also brought the humor and the joy, and you know, these moments that we're making these tense and tough decisions, you were always the one, we could all go hang out in your office and chill out for a minute and joke around, and we saw that too. We'll miss you a lot.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Quincy, I'm Mark Ruff, I'm the Chief Financial Officer, and actually, Councilmember Quincy and I have known each other less than two years. It feels like 30 years, but it's only been less than two years, but what a two years it's been. And I think that, when I think of adjectives for Councilmember Quincy, I think, number one, thoughtful. And thoughtful is, first of all, if any of you, and many of you, have had to show up to Ways and Means Agenda Setting, and a huge volume of issues come before the Ways and Means Committee. And number one, if you weren't there on time, we started without you, right? And number two is, everybody got questions asked and were expected to have answers. And the thing is, that more than anything else, is after somebody answered your question, you knew their name. And literally dozens of people showed up to Ways and Means, and you know far more staff people probably within the city by first-name basis than probably anybody else within the city. And that's a tribute to your thoughtfulness. I think the second part of thoughtfulness is that visionary viewpoint of, the city has basic infrastructure. I mean, the job of a city is to get people to move around, to be employed, to be as efficient as possible, to be as welcoming as possible. And I'll use three specific examples of what I've seen you do in the last several years. One is your support of the Convention Center. And it's not because the Convention Center is a glamorous place, because it pulls a lot of people in from other parts of the world, which it does, but it's also a feeder system for employment in the city. And I think you better than anybody else understands the fact that the city should be a welcoming place, not just for visitors, but also for people who view the city as a little bit scary to become an employee of, and when they come into a place like the Convention Center, see they can really move up. And I have people in my department that have followed that model. The second, on the parks and streets infrastructure deal, number one is, it's glamorous to think about parks, but certainly you and Mayor Hodges always repeated the mantra that streets are just as important, because that, along with certainly Councilmember Reich, understand the value of that infrastructure. And that funding would not have come forward were not you to stand up in the middle of that process and speak for the larger citizenry who see all of that infrastructure as equally important. And I third, I would say, is that things that are still going to be happening after you leave. One is the consolidated office building downtown, is I think you recognize the value of not just treating our employees well, but also really telling all of us that visitors, residents, businesses within the community deserve a place where they don't have to wander around and wonder who they should be talking to. But that, you know, that is, I know specifically, the work you've been doing on the committee for that particular project over the last several years, again, will be living on forever. So with all of that, I would just say thank you on behalf of the staff, and please know that your legacy, like many council members, will live literally on for generations. So thanks much.
Well, thank you so much. It's really an honor to be here. And this may surprise you, but I'm going to be brief. I think if you add up the time that I'm about to speak and what Kevin just did, I think that doubles what we did our first term. But this is a special place, and I think I need to begin, first of all, as Council Vice President Glidden ended, thanking my family. First of all, Ann is here, and it's amazing, the contributions that they have to make that they'll never get credit for. I wish Joe could be here, but he's off in Ireland right now doing some organic farming for about another month. And of course, my son Sam is teaching those kids at Jefferson School. It's one reason I don't speak. I think Council President said it first, echoed by Council Vice President, and I know shared by everybody. And I'm reminded when Robert Lilligrin and I were in that first term, and he kept talking about the staff of the City of Minneapolis, and he called them the B Team. And I said, wait a minute, I've played varsity before. You don't call people B Teams. And he says, no, no, you don't get it, John. They're not less than us, they're more than us. They be doing the work. They be doing what we asking to do and making us look good. And they be here long after work on. That's what's important. And I'm always reminded, early on in my professional career, which is more than 30 years in marketing and all the volunteer activities, I was always reminded that I'm not the most important person in the organization. And you can go ahead and ask any enterprise, any organization you've ever been in, who's the most important person you have here? Is it the mayor? Often, but not always. Is it a council member? Rarely, but sometimes. The most important person in any organization is the one that's having the contact with the customer, with the constituent, with the visitor. And in many cases, that is the public face of our public employees, and just our regular constituents that help provide directions, bring matters to our attention so we can be assistants. So the greatest honor to be a council member is not to do the work, but to be in the opportunity to make a difference in somebody's lives. And something I will always cherish, and thank you very much for this recognition and honor, and thanks for participating in this, because it's behind the scenes that makes that happen. And I need to also acknowledge the work of Mayor Hodges and all of my council colleagues this term and in the past term, because where I'm sitting, I got a pretty good view of the place, but I'm standing on the shoulders of a lot of people behind me. And so it's really been a pleasure. And if you've listened to all the things that Barb did and Elizabeth did, and then a few things I've added to this thing, really, there's nothing left for the next council to do. So you are in the greatest city, in the greatest state, in the greatest country, so you're in the greatest place on earth. Thank you all.
entered office at the same time four years ago. And I remember one of the first times that I met Councilmember Blong Yang was actually at my apartment, when the seven of us got together prior to getting elected, just to introduce one another and talk about what was to come the next four years. And we had discussed that we would exchange lawn signs. So every one of us were going to, you know, bring in seven lawn signs, and we were going to exchange it with each other. And I screwed up and was one short initially. And so I was giving them out, and I felt really bad, and I was then trying to rustle up the final lawn sign. And I remember talking to Blong Yang, and he said to me in classic Blong form, Jacob, honestly, I really don't care about your lawn sign at all. Subsequently, I remember, this is maybe about a year into our term, I remember being at, I think it was a school on the north side, and as we were walking in, there was a constituent that had come up to both of us to ask a question. And it had something to do with the schools, and the final piece of the question was, can you help and how? And I started to give this probably long-winded answer, and Blong touched them on the arm and said, no. Blong is honest, he is blunt, he stands by his principles 100% of the time. When we were getting elected, a member, Councilmember Goodman, told me that there was kind of two kinds of politicians, and there's no right or wrong answer here. One kind views themselves as a representative of the people that elected them. The other one views themselves... And I remember talking to Blong Yang, and he said to me in classic Blong form, "Jacob, honestly, I really don't care about your lawn sign at all." And that is classically Blong Yang. Subsequently, I remember, this is maybe about a year into our term, I remember being at, I think it was a school on the north side, and as we were walking in, there was a constituent that had come up to both of us to ask a question. And it had something to do with the schools, and the final piece of the question was, can you help and how? And I started to give this probably long-winded answer, and Blong touched them on the arm and said, "No." Blong is honest, he is blunt, he stands by his principles 100% of the time. When we were getting elected, a member, Councilmember Goodman, told me that there was kind of two kinds of politicians, and there's no right or wrong answer here. One kind views themselves as a representative of the people that elected them. The other one views themselves, having gotten the election certificate, that they are going to do what they believe is best for the community regardless of where the polls may lead. And I think Blong is very definitively the latter. He does what he thinks is right 100% of the time, and always stands up for the north side. And so, honoring Councilmember Blong Yang for his years of service to the city of Minneapolis. Whereas Councilmember Blong Yang was elected to represent the Fifth Ward in November of 2013... Skipping that. Whereas Blong and his family came to America as refugees, first settling in Lawton, Oklahoma, before moving to Merced, California. And whereas, after earning a BA from the University of California, Los Angeles, Blong moved to Minnesota to attend the University of Minnesota Law School. And whereas, Blong started his career as an advocate and attorney at Legal Aid of Minneapolis before opening his own private practice. And whereas, Blong moved to North Minneapolis in 2002 to live among the people he was representing at Legal Aid. And whereas, at the Nam Yau Refugee Camp, the deep relationship between the Hmong and the land they subsisted on was broken, with little family farming for more than 13,000 refugees living there. And whereas, Councilmember Yang has worked to restore that relationship to the land between the Hmong and all the residents of Minneapolis through supporting the expansion and simplification of the Community Garden Program on vacant city-owned lots. And whereas, as a refugee, a former public housing resident, and an advocate for the housing rights of everyone, Councilmember Yang has never forgotten the necessity of safe, affordable, and quality housing for all. Whereas, as a councilmember, among his lasting achievements will be the reinvigoration of the city's vacant boarded housing recycling program. I could not agree more. Aimed at rehabbing and maintaining buildings and homes that have come to the city through foreclosure, and promoting new construction on vacant lots owned by the city. And whereas, in 2013, Blong was the first Hmong-American city councilmember in Minneapolis' history, and one of the first two refugees, along with Councilmember Abdi Worsami, to serve on the Minneapolis City Council. And whereas, Councilmember Yang served on the Transportation and Public Works and Ways and Means Committee, and chaired the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee, as well as serving on numerous other boards and commissions. And whereas, Blong remains committed to the collective action of the good people of North Minneapolis to make this community a better place for all Northsiders. And whereas, after serving on the Minneapolis City Council, Blong will devote more time to being a father to his daughters Erica and Sam, and husband to Mai Neng Mao, an author and memorist who has helped lead the Hmong literary arts movement. Now therefore be resolved, the mayor and the city council do hereby present this honorary resolution in recognition of its sincere gratitude and appreciation of the many contributions made by Councilmember Yang to the north side, the city of Minneapolis, together with their best wishes in his future endeavors.
There we go. Blong. I am honored to be able to give this gift to you on behalf of the city of Minneapolis, the people in it. And I'm proud to have you as a colleague, and also to have grown to have you as a friend as well over these years. Blong is always somebody that is very approachable, and listens on issues, and will give you his straight take on something after he's thought about it and considered it. And I've gotten the opportunity to sit next to him on so many committees, and hear a council, and to see the thought that he puts into each and every issue. He's also not afraid to have a dissenting opinion, and at a time when, you know, 99% of the time, we're all voting the same way on things, but every now and then you get a controversial issue, and he always puts his principles first, and his community first. And he faces, when it's a tough vote, those votes, and raising his voice in a fearless way. And it's something I really respect about him, and have grown to appreciate, and he adds a diverse voice to this council, and an opinion that I think is so vitally important. And it's been just fun to watch him stand up over and over again for his community. And I don't think there's probably any bigger fan of the North High Polers than Blong. I don't think you've missed a game yet, maybe you, but it's, and it's going to continue, I'm sure. And it's just been really great working with you. I'm proud to have that lawn sign, and keep that on display at my house, and look forward to continue seeing you. Thank you for everything you've done for the city.
I'll keep my remarks brief, but I really think that, and certainly Mary-Lic Frye has mentioned it certainly in the resolution, that Councilmember Yang certainly is truly a Minneapolis and an American story. I think for him and his family, for him to get here at the age of three from Thailand, I know that your parents instilled in you that work ethic of service and education, and eventually, you led our city very distinguishably as a city councilmember. I certainly, as a department, had got to know Councilmember Yang through Fifth Ward, and as Chair of Public Safety. So I will tell you that, for the chief, the Chair of Public Safety is kind of like in high school, the principal. So I got summoned to his office many times, and even though he has this very reserved, calm, smooth demeanor, when he's behind this, when you get to his office, it's pretty different. I'll tell you that right now. So, and by the way, the only thing worse than getting called to the principal's office is when you get there, the principal says, "I'm calling your mom." So I just, I just, all right? So I just, okay? But I will say that every, every time, when it was very unfortunate, tragedy occurred, whether it was in the Fifth Ward, or whether in a part of the city, and I had to give Councilmember Yang a call, his first response to me was typically rondo, "What can I and my office staff do to that affected neighborhood and our city?" And so I know that you're always very compassionate about our community members, and wanting to make sure that public safety was there for our entire city. And so for that, I truly appreciate the working relationship with you, your dear wife Mai Neng Mua, and your two daughters. I know are going to look forward to your next journey, which I'm sure will be very happy and successful to you. And so I just want to thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. I just want to start by just saying that, you know, a lot of these stories, sometimes they're myths. They're not real. I think Rondo told a myth. There were very few times in which he was actually called to my office, and there was never a time in which I was going to say, "I'm going to call the mayor on you." So I just want to be clear about that. But, you know, I have to tell you all that, you know, the one thing that was impressed upon me when I started was, you know, what Council President Barb Johnson said with regard to, "The primary function of city government is public safety," and I took that very seriously. You know, the other thing that was instilled in me by Council President Johnson was just this idea that I had to carry my weight on the north side. And I hope, I hope I did. You know, that being said, I think the other piece that I want to just say, and you know, I know people have said a lot of great things, you know, and, you know, I will be a villain for not saying, you know, thank you to my family, and my friends, and all that stuff, but, you know, let me just say this piece. The people that I most want to thank are city staff. And that starts certainly with my staff as well. Sean Broom has just been amazing for me. Mike Yang, Yuri Yang, and Nikki Mitchell, just amazing people. They are the folks that make me look good, they're the folks that make things happen word five, and without them, things probably would have never happened as well as they did. So, thank you so much. You know, outside of that, I mean, just really, it has been an honor to be here, and I will just keep my comments short, just because I'm really known just for being a little bit controversial, so I will stop there. Thank you. It has been a pleasure. Thank you.
All right. We've come to our final honoring, and it is for my dear friend, Mayor Betsy Hodges. The resolution that I'm going to read speaks about your career, and all of your accomplishments, and your legacy. So I wanted to take a minute to highlight two things that have been so important to me, as I've watched you lead. And the first is that the women leaders here will understand what I say. People have so many opinions about how you are supposed to lead as a woman. Sometimes you talk too loud or too softly. You express too much emotion or not enough. You're too excited, or too in the weeds, right? We could go on and on. And Mayor, I've just watched you be so true to yourself, and just be unapologetically true to what you believe in, and who you are as a person. And it's been so important to me to watch that, and for my little girls, to see a woman leading like you do. And we'll see more of it, right? We will see so many more women coming forward, and people of color, and people who don't look like a traditional leader, and they'll all teach us in their own way, but you have led a trail. And the second thing is your kindness and caring for others. You've accomplished so many things, but at the end of the day, you know, on the campaign trail, or when I talk to people about you, people have so many stories about Betsy's kindness. So, you know, when someone's going through a hard time, you know, we often support each other around here as best we can, but people, so many people have told me, "Betsy checked in on me every single day. Every single day, maybe for a year." And that's the kind of love and kindness that you bring to others. And you see the things that maybe others don't, right? Maybe we think the problem has been solved, or the person has moved on, and you make sure, you check. And it's, it matters to all of us a lot. So now I will read, "This resolution honoring Mayor Hodges for her years of service to the city of Minneapolis. Whereas Betsy Hodges was elected mayor of and for the city of Minneapolis in 2013, and has served every part of our city with faith, commitment, and distinction for four years. And whereas during her tenure both on the city council and as mayor, Mayor Hodges championed legislation, policies, and budgets focused on running Minneapolis well, growing it equitably, and eliminating inequities in Minneapolis between white people and people of color and indigenous people. And whereas Mayor Hodges built a firm financial foundation for the city of Minneapolis, helping to pay off the debt of the internal service funds, leading the effort to fix the city's closed pension system, helping merge city and county libraries, passing our historic 20-year Parks and Streets investment plan, and as mayor, delivering four budgets that are structurally balanced both year over year and over the long term. And whereas Mayor Hodges championed and delivered policies to offer more security and stability to tens of thousands of working families in Minneapolis, and earned safe and sick-time ordinance that ensures no worker in Minneapolis has to choose between getting well and getting paid, and a groundbreaking $15 minimum wage without a tip penalty. And whereas Mayor Hodges built the strongest foundation for transforming public safety of any city in the country, making significant investments both in building community trust and community policing, and in making sure residents have a meaningful say in defining public safety for themselves. And whereas Mayor Hodges made unprecedented investments and policy changes to reclaim city streets for all users, improve safety for pedestrians and cyclists, and advance transit, investing by, including by funding an extensive network of protected bike lanes, passing a complete streets policy, funding Vision Zero, buying the land under Kmart to one day reopen Nicollet Avenue, negotiating for arterial BRT investments, and shepherding the Orange Line BRT to full funding, including a revolutionary new station at Lake Street that will help undo past wrongs. And whereas Mayor Hodges enhanced Minneapolis's global standing as a destination city, securing the X Games in 2017 and 2018, Super Bowl LVII in 2018, and the 2019 NCAA Men's Final Four, while investing in a transformed downtown through completion of the new Nicollet, the spectacular downtown East Commons, and a renovated Target Center. And whereas Mayor Hodges demonstrated that her values are Minneapolis values, extending organics recycling to every household in Minneapolis, expanding the city's investment in the arts, diversifying the city workforce so that city employees look more like the communities they serve, leading on sustainability, environmental justice, and combating climate change through the Clean Energy Partnership, making significant innovative investments in affordable housing, and putting racial equity at the core of the work of the city. And whereas, among all the things to love about Minneapolis, Mayor Hodges loves the people of Minneapolis the most. The most welcoming, engaged, passionate, diverse, committed, strong, and loving people anywhere. People determined to do what's right for our neighbors and communities. And whereas, in 12 distinguished years, Betsy Hodges has established a legacy of excellence in her innumerable contributions, both to the city enterprise, and to every community and every neighborhood in Minneapolis, all while having navigated some of the most challenging times in memory, with unwavering integrity and unflagging commitment to the public good, and the highest principles of public service, no matter the personal cost. Now therefore be it resolved, that the city council does hereby present this honorary resolution in recognition of its sincere gratitude, admiration, and appreciation for the many contributions made by Mayor Betsy Hodges to the city of Minneapolis throughout her long and distinguished tenure of service, together with our best wishes for your future endeavors."
Mayor Hodges, this is a thrill for me to be here, to be able to present on behalf of the city, of course, this token. I'm going to give this to you right now, so I can continue to think about what I'm going to say. You know, you were the first person to come to my campaign launch event, and you were the only councilmember to actually write a donation. Thank you for that. I think, and that our relationship goes beyond, prior to our campaigning. You are really a leader, have been, in the areas that are so important to the values of our city, and you've been a great guide to many of us along that path. It was your work that I think introduced the word equity into our city goals and values. And it was instructional, and it was something we could attach a value to, that we could attach goals to, that we could measure ourselves against. It's really inspirational. Obviously, the working families' agenda put that at the forefront. It was concrete, it was advancing what was important as a value of the city that we all shared. It was an incredibly important issue. You also were the great champion in so many environmental issues along the ways, and you showed us how to get there. Not just what to do, and how to do it, but how to achieve a real unified plan, and really structured. And that's what you do really well. You're smarter than any of us. But you don't acknowledge that. You're also incredibly funny. What many people don't understand is you're a country music fan, and you're a NASCAR fan. These are things that don't make sense. But we appreciate that. I remember, of course, we had the opportunity to travel together. We went to Harbin, China. And 26 hours on a flight with you is a treat. I do think, I still object to the fact you made me watch Die Hard four times.
I thought it was only...
It was three, yeah. I had to come back, too, so both trips. But as everybody has said, you lead by those three basic questions, and you... But as everybody has said, you lead by those three basic questions, and you measure everybody's performance on those three issues. And if we're not advancing the city, if we're not creating equity, if we're not stabilizing it for the future, if we're not growing it, we're not doing our jobs. So in that way, you are a guide for us all, and you've left a legacy behind you that many people will enjoy and benefit from for generations, and a terrific friend and a great person. Thank you so much, Betsy.
It is a great honor for me to take part in this and honor Mayor Betsy Hodges. We've been friends since Betsy first ran for city council, and we shared a passion for policy and for making progressive change and a passion for humor. I would love to tell you the story about when I decided that I really loved Betsy Hodges, when she made fun of me in a very particular way. I can't tell you that story because, like a lot of the mayor's humor, it is NSFCH, not Safe for City Hall. But it's knowing your passion and humor, off-color humor often, has been such a joy for me for all of these years. Your work on the council and as mayor, I think of two really lasting pillars. One, a seriousness about budgets, understanding that a budget is itself a moral document, but also that good governance and good stewardship of our resources are absolutely necessary if we're going to make positive change in people's lives. And the second, which John mentioned, is that we have, I believe, you have permanently changed the way in which we talk about the work of the city by putting equity at the center of that. The mayor raised the bar, and it was a bar that she was sometimes judged by, sometimes negatively by. And I think that even as painful as I know that that could be, I know for certain that you do not regret raising that bar, and it will stay there. We did not always agree. Many people in this room will know that in politics, politics and friendship can be very difficult, can be challenging. You have to, you sometimes disagree and you have to like pick things back up and keep working together, but especially if you want to maintain a friendship. And some of us here are better than others at doing that. I'm here to tell you that the mayor and I were terrible at it. Very bad. Until we weren't. And the thing about doing this kind of work and maintaining friendships is that when you do do that and get past a disagreement and remember the core friendship, that it is transformational. And I thank you for allowing me to relearn that lesson. Finally, I'll say that I had the pleasure of working with the mayor when she decided that she wanted to tell her story about being a survivor of childhood sexual abuse. And she knew the risks, the biggest one being, of course, that, and it seemed to surprise people, that of course she would consider that there would be people who thought of this as political in some way. What I saw after she unburdened herself, that day when we went to take that photograph, was I saw why you were doing it for you. It allowed you to connect with people in ways that a wall kind of came down. But then later, I saw really why you did it, and the number of times I saw people approach you and tell you how important it was to them that you told your story. One cannot get through personal trials like that one or becoming sober without having a sense of humor and without being strong at her core. I will close by sharing something that this week the mayor said on my Facebook page, because you all might remember that this last week we had a pretty amazing election in this country, where things that you, one could not, I could not believe were being debated, were being debated in Alabama. And Mayor Hodges wrote to me, "I want to state for the record that I've always been on the 'pedophilia equals bad' bandwagon." And when she wrote that, I texted her immediately and said, "Well, silver lining to ending your public life, right, is that the Betsy Hodges I know, the NSFCH, can be unleashed." I look forward to that freedom for yourself and you enjoying your life and your time with your husband Gary and all of us, we're friends. And I, on behalf of the people I work with, who, the work of equity that you put at the center, that's so important to us, on behalf of them and on the city and me personally.
So I'm just going to give everybody who knows me well a minute to place final bets about whether or not you're, I'm finally going to have my hot mic moment of swearing on a microphone, open microphone, just finish placing those bets. My hope is to get through without that, but people who know me well know that it's been dicey for 12 straight years. I want to start by saying thank you. I first want to thank my husband, Gary Cunningham, who is an extraordinary person and leader in his own right, but he is an extraordinary partner and husband. And the council president mentioned that sometimes the vagaries of public life can be much harder on the spouses and the families than it is on the elected official or the candidate. And I know and believe that's been true here. And Gary, you've just been amazing about standing with me always, and you are my favorite person. You are my best friend, and I love you. Thank you for that. And I too want to thank the staff, everybody who works for the city of Minneapolis. You are an extraordinary group of people. We have always, but especially these last four years, asked a great deal of you without proper public acknowledgement, without always saying thank you the way that we should as leaders here. And I know every day that the only reason anything happens in this city is because you do it. And you are extraordinary. It's been the honor of a lifetime working with you, learning from you, and getting the chance just to know you as colleagues and as friends. And I would extend that to my colleagues, all of them on the city council and the former mayor. Thank you for being colleagues. Thank you for the incredible work that you have done with and for the city of Minneapolis, that we are a different place for the better as the result of the work that we have been able to do together than this city would have been otherwise, and thank you for that. But I have special thank you for my team here at City Hall in the mayor's office, starting with my chief of staff, John Stiles, who is, when I asked him four years ago, four years and three weeks ago, to consider being my chief of staff, I knew that that was a role in which you could thrive and we could thrive together, and you have stepped up to the plate over and over and over again, both as someone doing work at the city, but also as a person and a human being and my friend, and thank you for it. I'm not always the easiest person to pull that off with, so congratulations and thank you. And to my friend Peter Weginias, who's been at City Hall a long time, but he's been my friend even longer and was one of the people who inspired me that you could do work in local government and do it with integrity and a sense of humor, and whose thinking and advice I have always turned to in difficult moments and easy moments and everything in between. So Peter, thank you very much. And then Grace Goodrich. She has been my executive assistant for the last four years, but I call her by her superhero name, which is the indispensable, that often the support work to make sure that my schedule and I and, you know, the office were all running and running well, Grace did that with, well, with grace, I'm sorry, I don't mean to make a play on your name, but with class and with ease and always a smile and always goodwill, and I am so, so grateful for you, Grace. Thank you very much. To Eric and Jerome, my communications team, didn't always make that easy either, and thank you. Thank you for that extraordinary work. And to all the policy aides in my office who did the day-to-day work of, you know, the stuff that's in this, in this resolution happened because they could show up when I couldn't, because they could do the work, because they helped me build the relationships. And I am deeply grateful for them. And to Tutu and Will, who did the constituent work day after day, fielding the kinds of phone calls human beings actually shouldn't have to field from one another in moments that were difficult and people needed to vent at someone, they vented at Will and Tutu. So thank you to them for taking that on. And Ben Hecker. 12-plus years together. Ben and I met on the campaign in 2005. He was my campaign manager for city council in 2005, and we have worked together every day since. But more important than that, Ben, you have had my back every single one of those days. And just please know that I will always do my best to always have yours forever. I owe you everything. Thank you. And finally, well, first, to whoever I forgot, thank you, because I know I did, and I thank you. But I want to thank the people of Minneapolis for the opportunity to serve you in this way for these years. The most important and the best part of the city of Minneapolis are the people of Minneapolis. And I'm going to paraphrase one of my heroes, and I'm going to say, "People will little note nor long remember what we say here, but they can never forget what we all did here." That the work that we did together as a city, enabled by the people of Minneapolis, that is what will last and that is what will matter. But the only reason we could do it is because the people of Minneapolis asked us to. The only reason that we could do it is because the people of Minneapolis are strong, resilient, fierce advocates for one another and for this city. And in those moments when I was subject to the ferocity and I was participating in that fierceness, always the people of Minneapolis, I have always loved the people of Minneapolis, because that is the strength. That is the best thing about the city of Minneapolis is the people, and it is the honor of my lifetime to have gotten to serve us. So it is true that on my whiteboard, there are three questions. They're still there right now. How will this move the dial on equity? How will this move the dial on growth? And how will this help make the city run well? Everything that I've done as mayor has been because the people of Minneapolis asked me to do those three things. And I've done, everything I've done as mayor, I've run through those three traps. And when I leave here today, I'm going to go down to the office, I'm actually going to erase the whiteboard, because my time as mayor, my time in City Hall is done. But that charge from the people of Minneapolis is not, because those are always going to be the fundamentals of what Minneapolis cares about and what's important to people moving forward. And we don't need it on a whiteboard for us all to know that that's true. And it has been an honor to be one of the carriers of those values and one of the people who helped make those values real in the city. I am grateful more than people will ever know for the opportunity to serve this city. It has been the honor of a lifetime. As a joke, I almost wanted to pick up the mic and drop a bad word, but I'm not going to. Whoever bet on, whoever bet that I'd make it through, you won.
Before we begin our council meeting, I just want to mention that we are going to have a reception in the rotunda from 2:30 to 4:30 this afternoon for folks to greet the people who are leaving. And we promise that there'll be absolutely no speeches, so just refreshments and a chance to visit. Thank you all very much. With that, I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye. Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Councilmember Kano.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Reich.
Here.
Councilmember Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami is absent. Goodman.
Present.
Councilmember Frye.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
We have a quorum present. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda, and there's a couple changes to the agenda. First, a motion by myself to amend the agenda to include under the Order of Resolutions, Resolution Honoring Councilmember Jacob Frye for his years of service to the city of Minneapolis. The second is a motion by myself to amend the agenda to include under the Order of New Business, an amendment to the 2018 legislative agenda relating to local government grants, and a motion by myself to amend the agenda to include under the Order of Resolutions, a resolution amending the 2018 appropriation resolution to set the salary schedule for 2018 through 2021 for the mayor and council members. There are motion to adopt the agenda, I'm sorry, a motion on any of those, anyone have any problems with any of those amendments? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and then a motion to adopt the agendas in order.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. And next, we have referrals and petitions, communications, and reports to the city officers to proper committees and departments.
So moved.
Been moved, moved and seconded? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. The reports of the standing committees are next. And the first is Committee of the Whole. Councilmember Glidden, Vice President Glidden is the chair of the Committee of the Whole, Councilmember, Council Vice President.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrew Johnson chaired that meeting.
Okay. You mind? All right. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 18 items on Committee of the Whole report. The first is U-Visa ordinance, then the second is a position in the Human Resources Department, as is the third. The fourth is an appointed position in Finance and Property Services. Fifth is an appointed position in the Police Department. Sixth is a security designations policy. Seventh, a collective bargaining agreement. Eighth is Northern Metals Consent Decree Advisory Committee Appointments. Nine is a Pulling Place Designation Resolution. Ten, a number of legal settlements. Eleven, the agreement with U.S. Food and Drug Administration. Twelve is appointed position to the Human Resources Department. Thirteen is support for the D-line bus rapid transit. Fourteen is a contract with the Federal Reserve around our minimum wage study. Fifteen is the Minneapolis Youth Compact Commitments. Sixteen is memorandum of understanding with children's health care. And seventeen is a legislative information management system resolution. And eighteen is the committee and council calendar for 2018. Now go ahead and move that full report.
Councilmember Johnson has moved the entire Committee of the Whole report. Anyone want to pull any of those items? Anyone want to pull any of those items off or discuss them? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich is absent. Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. We have 13 items we're bringing forward from the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee for approval this morning. We discussed them in Committee of the Whole. I just want to make note of item number 12, which is a transfer agreement of our bonding authority to St. Paul Housing Authority. This is in anticipation of a possible problem with entitlement bonds in the larger federal tax bill that, as of yesterday, I heard was going to be resolved and local jurisdictions would retain their entitlement authority. But until that bill is passed, we're going to transfer our authority to the St. Paul Housing and Redevelopment Authority so they can issue those bonds before the end of the year. And if we retain our authority, that we'll take an action next year to transfer them back. So I just wanted to make a note of that. There's also three bond issuances that we're moving forward today in anticipation of closing on those bonds. With that, I'm happy to move all items on the CDRS agenda.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the entire Community Development Report, Regulatory Services Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make a quick comment on item number seven, the first two sections.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
You know, this is pretty obscure, but I just want to point it out that A Vision LLC and its principal, Bruce Barron, in somewhat of an unprecedented type of move, basically has given money back to the city and just said, you know, I'm going to build two houses in Ward five without subsidy whatsoever, and I'm going to build it at market rates because the market has improved. And, you know, I think, I mean, those sorts of improvements are wonderful to see, you know, typically speaking, we don't really see people giving money back. And so to see that is just kind of really good news. And so I just want to point that out and thank folks like Bruce Barron, who are committed to North Minneapolis, investing in North Minneapolis. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the Community Development Regulatory Services Report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have four items from zoning and planning. Item number one is a rezoning in vacation for NICO properties, which is related to the 35W Transit Access Project. Item number two is a rezoning to support an affordable housing project at 3,001 Fourth Street Southeast. The committee had forwarded it without recommendation. I will move to approve this item. We did have staff explore a different zoning classification, but to do that would delay the project. Item number three is approving three members of our Heritage Preservation Commission for their seats, and we're very thankful for their volunteer work. And item number four is a street vacation for the steel supply at 23rd Avenue North. This also includes a staff direction to our public works staff to negotiate a lease for this area so that we do not have to vacate the land. So we'll be denying the application for vacation, but directing staff to negotiate a lease so that they continue to use the street as they have been for their business. Now, move items one through four.
Councilmember Bender's moved the zoning and planning committee report, including moving item number two. All items, any discussion on any of those? Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't mean to speak a lot, but, you know, I just want to speak really briefly about item number four, which is the street vacation for 23rd Avenue North between Second Street and First Street North. And, you know, in this situation, I'm glad that we came to some sort of resolution that is a compromise, certainly. But, you know, for specific streets like this where it's just a block that runs straight into railroad, basically, and, you know, we've blocked off the part that goes to the Mississippi River, you know, a lease of some sort is something that, you know, would be great just for the business like this, just because of, you know, their efforts to just do good work in the city and to contribute to the city. And so really appreciate that public works staff and also CPED staff have moved to figuring out what to do in this situation. And a lease of some sort would be wonderful, and I hope that this gets done soon. This specific business, I know Second Street Steel Supply has wanted this for the past decade plus. And the fact that it's carried on for this long is, you know, maybe a little bit sad, but certainly it's positive to see that we're going to move towards finding some sort of resolution for this. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the zoning and planning report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have resolutions, and I'm just going to go through them very quickly because we just did for a very long time. The resolution honoring myself, Council Vice President Elizabeth Glidden, Councilmember Quincy, Councilmember Yang, and Mayor Hodges. Any discussion on any of those resolutions? Councilmember Quincy, you want to talk? Okay. All in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. And then we have honorary resolution honoring Mary Peterson. Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. The resolution is the culmination of a goal that I've had in my office since I first took office. When Kim Keller was my aide, we did a strategic planning session on what we'd like to accomplish, and that was followed every year since, including with John Dibbig, who's been my council aide for the last six years. And at the top of the list every year of our strategic planning was to talk Mary Peterson out of retiring. And we were successful through that, through this term. And I just wanted to allow everybody a chance to read the resolution and to have a special memory of Mary Peterson, who has served the city for 49 and a half years. And I just wanted to acknowledge that and ask for people's support in the acceptance of the resolution.
All right. Then on Mary Peterson's honorary resolution, any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Then we have honorary resolution honoring our colleague, Councilmember Jacob Frye, who's moving on to, I guess, bigger and better things. So any discussion on that resolution? Is he here? He's not here? Okay. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the salary schedule. And I am going to move, it's in front of you, the salary schedule for council members and mayor for 2018. And I just want to make a few remarks about this. I have followed, as council president, this issue very closely, including every year asking for an accounting of people's salaries across our enterprise. And, you know, as people talked before how challenging this work can be, I am going to be, I'm going to be making a motion today that proposes to increase the salary of the mayor and council members by $10,000 in a one-time adjustment. And I will just explain why I'm doing this. It's because we have fallen behind as council members in some really challenging times. You know, we had several years where we actually had no salary increases whatsoever, you know, among us and among our employees. I want to be clear about that. But we also have a system where council members and mayor don't get steps. And steps are an acknowledgement of performance, they're an acknowledgement of longevity in a job. And so we have fallen behind the comparable group of managers, union, and appointed, which I would say typically are grades 10 to 12 in the city. Our council member salary in 2017 is $88,695. Comparable city of Minneapolis management group right now is about $98,000. And so 10 years ago, we were on par at $74,000. So we have to, by law, set our salaries for the next four years, not just, obviously, for people that are here now, but the people that'll be coming in. And I am, again, proposing this increase. And generally, this will put us on par with other full-time councils across the country, including Denver and Boston. We'll still be $20,000 less than Portland and Seattle. In St. Paul, our neighbor across the city, we have a part-time council member, a council member by their charter. They're paid $63,000 a year. The increase to the mayor's salary from 116 to 126 will match the mayor of St. Paul's salary. So I am moving the resolution that's in front of you. It is a resolution amending the 2018 general appropriation resolution and setting the salary schedule for 2018 through 2021. And I'll make it clear, then, at the end of every year, also, there will be an adjustment, but will be adjustment that will be an average of the average labor settlements that are negotiated with our employees going forward. So I will move that item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, I suppose perhaps because we're amending the budget? No?
Madam President, if there's no objection from any member of council, it's recorded as a yes.
All right. All in approval, say aye. Aye. Thank you. Negative? Noes? Thank you. That item is adopted. Next, we have, under unfinished business, a request by Officer Michael Griffin for reimbursement of his criminal defense fees. And this is a matter that's been under discussion both among council members and city attorney's office. And I am going to move that we reimburse Officer Griffin for his criminal defense fees in the amount of $75,000 related to the prosecution of Officer Griffin in USA versus Griffin. And I will just mention that this will be the last time that we'll be asked to reimburse for a criminal defense of our officers. The Federation now has joined the, an insurance policy that will cover this kind of work in the future. So I will move that item. Any discussion? Seeing none. What do we need for that, Mr. Carl? A roll call or a?
Madam President.
Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Kano.
Yes.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Nay.
Glidden.
Nay.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are eight ayes and four nays.
That item passes. And next, we have under new business, a nuisance condition property waiver of 4126 41st Avenue South, approving a waiver of the 60-day requirement to declare a property a nuisance and proceed with the provisions of Chapter 249 for the fire-damaged property at 4126 41st Avenue South. Any discussion on that item? Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a house fire that affected some residents, and so I appreciate staff working diligently to get this on our agenda so that we can help proceed with demolishing the home if that's what the residents are ready for. And I appreciate my colleagues' support on this.
Any discussion then on that item? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the Public Health Advisory Committee Appointment. And we have an appointment approving the council, appointment of Case Christie Graume, excuse me, Ward 11, seat 11, for a two-year term beginning January 20, January 1, 2018 and ending December 31, 2019. Any discussion on that appointment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a gift acceptance from Insight Wireless Group for our used digital antenna system equipment. Passage up a resolution accepting donation for digital antenna equipment for improvements to the Public Safety Communications Network, including public safety radio and cellular telephone connectivity. Any discussion on that gift acceptance? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a contract amendment with Meet Minneapolis reflecting the 2018 approved budget and for the Internet Destination Sales System loan extension. Any discussion on that contract amendment? It's an authorizing amendment to Meet Minneapolis to account for the additional one-time budget approval by the city council. And the amendment to the loan agreement extends $50,000 of principal to repay at 3% interest for one year. Any discussion on that contract amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Under the legislative agenda, this is the item, one of the items that was moved at the beginning. This is approving an amendment to the local government grant sections of the legislative agenda by adding language seeking an appropriation in the fiscal year 2018 from the state general fund to repay local and county bridge loans for the North Regional, North Library, North Branch Library, excuse me, emerged career in technology capital project. We are, we have a $700,000 loan that is shared between us and the city. We're the biggest loner, I guess. County is, I think, $200,000 of this. So just adding, asking that this get added to our agenda for seeking reimbursement from the state for that technology center. Any discussion on that legislative agenda item? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. With that, announcements are in order. Councilmember Glidden.
Thanks, Madam President. I just, you know, we kind of, we had a lot of presentation at the beginning, and sometimes you don't get a chance to kind of say all the special things that you want to say. And so I just wanted to do a special shout-out and thank you to the clerk's office. You know, Jackie and Irene and Peggy, I mean, I've worked with you all for 12 years. And Casey, you've been an amazing leader of the clerk's office. I'm trying to remember how many years now, but it's been, it's been a while, and you've really, I think, done a marvelous job. And it's really exciting to see the new people come on into the clerk's office. And it's been very fun to work with, with all of you. And you're just so critical to how we do our jobs, the everyday day of legislating, the elections process. I mean, it's just, so anyway, I just wanted to say a special thank you, that I really appreciate how much you help us do our work. And, and again, this is the function that kind of keeps the city moving, is how we get our job done as the legislators of the city. And so thank you very much to the clerk's office. And then I'll just say again, thank you to all of my colleagues. It's been a pleasure serving with you.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I also just wanted to give a shout-out to Casey Carl for the incredible work he did in pulling this morning together, as well as all of the work he's done to pull the afternoon reception together. Although he's happy to give all of us a script and a lot of credit and glory, the truth of the matter is that he is working feverishly behind the scenes in order to ensure things happen. And but for him, we would not have had the awards, the resolutions, or the beautiful presentations we had this morning. And so he, more than most in the enterprise, understands the importance of tradition and treating people right. And I really appreciate everything you've done for my friends and colleagues in making today special.
[applause] Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I didn't want to add to this sadder note, but I do want to just say that, you know, sometimes we have to acknowledge history. sometimes we have to acknowledge history. And, you know, I just want to recognize and acknowledge the passing of Mayor Ed Lee in San Francisco, the first Asian-American mayor of a major city. Just, you know, I mean, to see just history happen and then just to see the passing, just, I think it's appropriate for us to recognize that as well. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn is in order, and hope everyone joins us at 2:30 this afternoon in the Rotunda.
You know, can I just say one more?
Councilmember Glidden. Yep.
Sorry. I got to do it. But, you know, because we're not going to have any special comments downstairs. And I know you're going to have a special event honoring your service in January, council president. But I just wanted to have my opportunity to say thank you to you. You know, we've served together for 12 years, and you are making history for the, for the city of Minneapolis. And, and I just feel like that you have been a good model of how to refine what you want to do to make sure you're doing what is important. You've always had a love of the history of the city. I really appreciate that more than anybody else. I feel like you know the nooks and crannies of City Hall and how does it work? And you've really stuck to your principles, balancing that with being a, you know, a good advocate for the area of the city that you represent, but always having a heart for the whole city. And I just wanted to say thank you, and, and I'm glad we got a chance to work together.
Well, thank you, thank you. You know, I, listening, and I'm going to be really brief too, but I have to say that part of my life's experience that I brought to this job is my mother's service. And, you know, that was part of the campaign against me this time. But I benefited so much from her work. And, you know, my mother was a widow, and she had seven children. And she was so remarkable. And this job was, because she was a widow, it was her life, you know? Even her social life, when I think about it. And so I knew what this job was going in because I'd answered phone calls at her house, you know, at 3 o'clock in the morning when I was staying overnight there for something. And so I knew exactly what the job was when I, when I came in. And I just think back on the times that, you know, she was the first woman city council president in city Minneapolis. And I don't acknowledge her enough, I guess is what I want to say. And she, she taught me the ropes, and I benefited from that. And I want to thank her for all she did for me today. Thank you. So motion to adjourn is in order?[1764.86]